Good afternoon and welcome. This is the May 6, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right. Proceed down to the right and down the stairs. If that is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Do not use the elevator. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each agenda item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. This time, we'll hear on a budget amendment for surplus radios from Assistant Chief Chris Stewart and Chief Rob Frampton.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
So I brought Chris Stewart along. He's going to talk about a budget amendment for some surplus radios that we had.
Yeah. So the fire department recently designated a surplus of two Motorola APX 6000s. The radios were sold through procurement at auction for a total of $1,925. We are asking that that just shy of 2,000 goes into our vehicles account. We're currently operating at a little bit of a underfund at that, so that would be greatly needed.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Yes?
I commend you for figuring out how to get money for what's old.
Yes. That was my thought when I read it. So yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys. Yes. Okay, great. And seeing no public comments, counsel, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And next, we'll hear on the parking ordinance from City Administrator Andy Kithrow. This is in addition to the agenda. Turn the tables over to you.
Sure. Thanks for having me. So Department of Field Operations has requested additional $57,000 to be added to the parking authority budget. At the beginning of the year, we end up funding this a little shy for the full part-time and full-time personnel positions. We knew we were going to have to come before you for a budget amendment, so we waited to the fourth quarter of the year to go ahead and do that. And also, we have some ongoing street improvements that we wanted to do, some signage as well as some street markings, and then some continual maintenance that needs to be done in the parking garage. Fortunately, we have a very healthy parking fund this year. Our revenues are above, well above our budget numbers, so the increase of the $57,000 will be covered by the increased revenue projection. So no cost to the general fund or costs, it's just increasing the allocation appropriations for the expense, but we have the revenues there to back it up.
Good. And that was my question, as you answered the why, why this was done. So that answers mine. Any other questions from counsel? He answered the why, like why, you know, why was this, why was this budget amendment added to, added now versus budgeting for it previously?
I do have to have a question. Is it, are there increases or are there more people that we're employing?
Actually, when we set the budget up, we ended up not fully funding the two positions that were out of that budget. We found out about this clerical error back in the fall, but we wanted to make sure that we knew exactly what the shortfall was going to be before we added additional funding. Also, with the ongoing transition of the parking garage, we had decreased the funding for part-time staff, thinking we were going to be automated early last fall. That did not happen completely, as you can still see the woes that we were going through. So we had an increase in our part-time staff. So between those two, we had additional funding required to cover these costs.
Actually, one question. What, what, so can you detail as much as possible, the parking updates? So I see it's street signs, I'm sorry, street markings, signs, poles, and ongoing updates. Will the consumer see these updates or is it just going to be?
Yes, we can talk about it now or at the 5:00 PM downtown parking. But a quick preview, as we've been discussing for several months, one of our plans was to increase our on-street parking capacity. So the street markings would be to clean up the lines that have faded, but also add the additional on-street parking. Another part of our discussion is just improved signage on what our on-street parking looks like moving forward, including the zones if we're doing pay stations, and just improving our signage so people know what they April and can and can't do in certain areas. And then finally, within the parking garage, it just continues to show its age. So as people are navigating into the parking garage with some of the new automation, just things that we finding, we ran through that maintenance budget pretty quickly, so this is just getting us to the last couple of months. Did I answer that sufficiently?
Yes, thank you. Any other?
I have another question. And I, how much are these processes that are working in our parking lots? How much do they make a name?
So we are employing full-time employees within our parking fund. If you're, if you're asking about our revenue clerk and our parking supervisor, those ranges scale anywhere between the high 30s up into the mid 50s, depending on the position. We also have a general park maintenance workers or maintenance techs that work downtown. Oscar, who everybody sees, he works out of ABCD. We don't really employ many part-time staff anymore because we don't have parking attendants like we used to because those gates are no longer manned gates. Our downtown ambassadors, who you see around on the blue jackets and in the golf carts, they are paid out of a different account, but they are paid an hourly range.
Reason for me asking is because you said two, and now you said it's a full-time?
For sure.
I'm pushing it. A full-time, a full-time clerk and a supervisor?
Yes, so in our parking fund, we have two positions. Traditionally, we've had two. It is our parking supervisor, Jordan. She does both our enforcement and then also the backbone of all of our parking. And then Doreen, that's who you see most of the time. She helps with a lot of the revenue and permitting collections, and then also assisting people within the parking garage. Most people know Doreen if you've gone into the parking garage. So those are our two people who work in the parking administration part, and then we have people who also work downtown, more in the maintenance and the general maintenance tech side of the house.
So this money will also be going towards that too as well?
No, those individuals are paid out of a different pot of money. Yeah. Whether it's field operations or ABC.
Okay.
Great. Seeing no other questions from counsel and no public comments, counsel, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, good, thank you. Okay. Next, we'll have Director of Housing and Community Development, Mir Boda, to discuss accepting a donation of real property.
Looks like that works. All right. Good afternoon, counsel. So before you, we got a real property donation. This is 404 Hastings Street from a gentleman named Perry Willie. This was something that, just real quick, Mr. Willie was attempting to get a VA loan, and there were some outstanding tax liens on the property, which Mr. Willie had thought about seven years ago that he had donated the property to the city. So I spent about a week and a half digging into everything and spoke to the bank, which had wrote down the loan because they thought the property was donated to the city. So looking back, just, there was a couple of properties in this loan, and Mr. Willie was trying to donate two of them to the city. And looks like 404, at some point between directors and new law firms and COVID, this fell through the cracks. So what we're asking is to accept the donation. When this happens, the city will write down and waive the city taxes, and then we will also cover the approximately $1,000 of county taxes. And then we will clear the deed, receive the property. Going to be talking to other property owners that are beside this property to see what their future plans are. This is a smaller lot, and it's, you know, in, with current code, we could not build something on it, but we'll see what we can work out with the other property owners on that street.
Okay, good. Counsel? Okay. No public comments?
Holly Worthington would like to speak on this topic. Holly, did you want to speak on this topic?
All right, thank you, Mr. Boda. All right, next, Water Works Director Cory Cameron to give us a PFOS update. Good afternoon, Ms. Cameron. Yes, just put, thank you.
Okay, so I was asked to come give a little update on PFOS, so I'm going to go through, want to know what's going on, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So first off, we understand it's alarming to hear there's PFOS detected in our groundwater. So I'm here to explain a little bit more about what's going on, give you a little reassurance. The city's water currently meets and exceeds all current water quality standards by MDE and EPA. New regulations have brought increased attention to PFOS, okay? And that's nationwide, okay? So I'm going to talk a little bit about PFOS. What's the new rule and the actions that we're taking to learn more about PFOS and address PFOS in our system, okay? PFOS are manufactured chemicals that have been used in industry and consumer products since the 40s and 50s, okay? And they're used for everything. Firefighter, firefighting foam, Scotch guarding, waterproofing, they're in your clothes or in fabric softener, they're all over your kitchens, food packaging, Teflon pans, Teflon-lined appliances, any recycled products, makeup, et cetera, on these chairs, on the carpet, in your cars, it's everywhere. That's why it's the forever chemicals, okay? PFOA and PFOS were eliminated in the early 2000s due to their environmental hazards, and the big companies were like, okay, we'll get rid of that. They spun it into 10 new ones that are called the Gen X PFOS chemicals. So meanwhile, the PFOA and PFOS, they're still out there, and they're seeping into our groundwater, and they're seeping into the environment, and they're seeping into the fish, and they're seeping into the wildlife and the animals and into people, so it's out there. So we knew, so let's talk about the new regulation. So every five years, the EPA requires all water systems to sample for unregulated contaminants. Unregulated contaminants are samples that the EPA's, they're substances that the EPA puts together a list of every five years to study for future regulations. There's things they see out there, and they're like, let's take a look at this, see how this is affecting the water. So PFOS has been an unregulated contaminant. We've sampled for it probably for about the last 10 years or so it's been sampled for. And so then when the EPA gets all these samples back and they start to notice a trend or there's a problem with something, then it's like, oh, okay, so now we're going to have to, you know, set forth a regulation. So they set forth a regulation at 70 part per trillion. Wasn't really a regulation, it was just an action level and why they were building the regulation. So we knew this regulation was coming. We weren't real worried at first because it was 70 and we're so low on the scale, so we thought we were going to be fine until about a year or so ago, and then we started hearing, oh, they're taking it down to zero, you know? And so actually, it came in at four parts per trillion because that's as low as lab data can sample to accurately at this time. And it's still a new thing, they're still getting testing procedures together, it's even changed a couple times since it first started. So just this, so we've been waiting for a year for this to drop. It just dropped in April, the new rule of four parts per trillion. Now, what happens is we are given that it doesn't go into effect until 2029. So from now until 2027, water systems are going to be doing increased monitoring for PFOS, detecting, finding out what we have, and I'm telling you, the monitoring for this is hard. We have to wear a Tyvek suit. We have to make sure the person taking the sample does not have waterproof boots on, they do not have fabric softener in their clothes, you know, they don't have makeup on. Anything that this person has on them can show up in the PFOS sample, so it's a very delicate process. But anyway, we're going to continue with this monitoring for the next several years, and then by 2029, systems have to be in compliance. So what this gives us is five years to plan, find funding, design, construct, and implement treatment. So what are we doing? Here's what we're doing. We're kind of getting started. So at the Paleo plant, we're already working on the design of a new treatment building. So what we're doing now is adding a change order to the current building to put in for PFOS treatment, which is going to be a granular activated carbon system. We call it GAC. And we're going to have to make a larger building now and put in these GAC filters. I talked to the engineers on Friday, last Friday, because I'm waiting for the change order to put in for that, and you'll be seeing that real soon, and it's going to be big. It's going to be about $300,000, $350,000 for the design for the PFOS portion, and the upfront estimate for the PFOS portion of the building is going to be 14 million. That's just an estimate right now, it's not the done deal, but that's probably going to be in that range. So what we're going to start, probably late summer, early fall, we're going to embark on a bench scale test, and talking with the engineers about this on Friday also, what that's, what that is, is we're going to take our water, we're going to send it to this lab in Niagara Falls. It's a big lab, they have a GAC system set up in their lab, and they run our water through these filters. It tells us the level of filtration or filtration rates that we'll need, what we're going to need for full removal of the PFOS from our system. And then the other thing I thought was cool, they can also run it through at accelerated rate, and it'll show how often we have to change out the media in these filters. So will it be one year, will it be five years, will it be 10 years? Because that's going to be a big cost factor, and then that's also a hazardous waste when we have to remove it. So, you know, and so we're also talking a lot of money. So it's kind of neat, this lab's going to be able to move it forward and tell us, and so we'll have all those answers. So we're going to complete that test before we start the design, hoping to have the design by early next year, and then put in for more state funding, hopefully to get state funding for this to build out. So that's kind of our plan right now, and I can come back, update you every six months, every so much, let you know what's going on. That's our plan for treating the Paleo plant. Now, Park Plant, same thing, we have PFOS there at these low levels, but still over the limit. So at the Park Plant, we are going to do a study there and figure out which way we're going to go. We can put in the granular activated carbon filters, but, you know, we're limited, we're in a historic district, it's a small package area in the Park Plant, we're going to have to find a place to build that out. We're also going to do some, some boring tests and try and drill our wells a bit deeper because our park wells are not that deep. They're like 40 to 65 feet below the earth, so we want to drill deeper, and there's a couple aquifers deeper below the current one we're in, maybe that, you know, maybe we have cleaner water down there. So we're going to drill down, get some samples, so, because our options are either install treatment or find another water source by 2029. I mean, neither way is going to be cheap, but I think finding deeper wells would be cheaper, but that's no guarantee. So that's our plan, our next plan for Park, is do a study, and then we'll move forward in the same way there. So I also wanted to point out, we're measuring PFOS in parts per trillion, and so to give you a little perspective on part per trillion, that's like one droplet of water in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. So, you know, 15 parts per trillion would be 15 drops of water in that pool. So an Olympic pool holds 660,000 gallons of water, which equals 10.6 million 8-ounce glasses of water. So you're going to have to drink 10.6 million glasses of water to get that one part per trillion of PFOS. So it's, parts per trillion is a lot. So, and I also wanted to point out, as you previously know, we're also involved with the lawsuits with 3M and DuPont, you know, for the PFOS. You know, we didn't create this, this was manufactured by these big companies. It's not going to go away until there's public outrage against it and it's stopped, you know, in the manufacturing. It is just, it's seeping into the water systems and water systems nationwide. But that's our plan. Also, my understanding is there are some companies around town reaching out, telling people their water's not safe by our filters. We had another company call us and said, what is going on? People are calling us about putting in filtration systems. What I can tell you is, we're working on spending a lot of money to put in filtration. These systems of these companies that are trying to get you to buy in, and that was the original from the USA Today ad, if you drilled down on that, they were trying to sell filtration systems. They're expensive, you know? If you wanted something for your home, go on Amazon. You can get something from $60 to $300, it's like a, just like a Brita filter. But any home sink filter, just like your refrigerator filter, if you don't change that filter out, you're not doing yourself any good. But, you know, that's kind of the gist of it. I'm willing to answer any questions if I can or get back to you or?
Well, we appreciate that, and I think, you know, and every six month or so would be good to come back and give us and also the public, you know, and I did see the, you know, certain citizens were alarmed at this, and so I'm glad that we did put out the very detailed report out.
The press release, yeah.
That was really good, and that helped to clear the air. So if we can just continue to, again, if, you know, every six months or so, just come give us a brief update as to what we're doing, and then what we're going to be doing will be great.
And we put a whole lot of information on the Department of Public Works webpage. There's a link to click on for PFOS, and we've got a lot of different things you can read, including one in the future of water and how expensive it's going to be, but, you know, and why this is going to be so expensive.
Counselwoman Jackson, give them.
How compliant are we with EPA and MDE with the PFOS?
Well, right now, we're 100% compliant because it doesn't go into effect until 2029. And I can tell you, if it was, you know, there are other systems that they have asked them to take their wells offline, you know, like that trailer park on Nellar Mill that we're bringing into our system, they had to remove their well from the system because their PFOS was up over, like, pretty high, like almost 200 part per trillion. And so if our water was truly that high, they would do the same and have you remove it right away.
And the reason why I'm asking, and the reason why I was concerned about the PFOS and wanted updates, is because my daughter lives in New Jersey, and they have an extremely high level of PFOS, and they were just told maybe two or three months ago, and it's been about a year, that they've known this. So that's why I want to keep us updated and our citizens updated, because, I mean, now I'm telling my daughter to go buy bottled water, don't drink her water. I'm kind of, you know, concerned about even taking a bath in it, you know, bathing in it. But, you know, I mean, we have to be proactive, and we must be concerned about our citizens. So that's the reason why I asked for that PFOS update, not just because of her, but because of our constituents and people who live in the city and the county.
I will tell you, you don't know how much PFOS is in your bottled water because they have not been asked to comply with the rule yet, so there's no guarantees there. I've also read that it does not soak, like it's fine for bathing and things like that, it does not soak through your skin as much in the water as the full ingestion.
Well, thank you for that.
But, you know, I honestly, I'm more concerned with how it's all over our kitchens, the more I learn about it. And, and now when I buy things online, I always scan down to the bottom and look for that Proposition 65 from California, because if it doesn't meet Proposition 65, you don't want it. California is always ahead of the game and things like that, so I always look for that. As I've found out, a lot of things in my kitchen, your shower curtain, everything you're buying is loaded with that stuff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
No, thank you.
I was just going to say one thing. I think phase two to the filters is the, is the carbon discharge, which I think captures not only the PFOS but everything else, I think that's what we were talking about the other day.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of emerging contaminants constantly that we're testing for, and we were talking about that, where we're like, once we put these carbon, these granular activated carbon filters in, I mean, it's going to clean up a lot of stuff, it'll take anything that comes down the line because who knows what's going to be the next PFOS. So yes, it's going to be an expensive hit, but it's going to cover a lot.
Yeah, and I'm not a scientist nor a physician, obviously, but, but I happened to watch it on TV. I was watching the actual movie about PFOS on Netflix, and they were, they were counting it initially in billions, parts per billion, and they've gone to trillion. And I don't think there's really any particular hard evidence that it causes, other than the early cases when it was actually being buried by DuPont on that farm and the related parties. So it's, you know, definitely think we take a proactive approach, but I'm not sure it's as dangerous as maybe it ultimately will shoot.
Yeah, and we are being proactive, and we've been planning for this, we knew it was coming. And like, where your daughter lives in New Jersey, that probably the reason they didn't know a year ago is because they didn't know how stringent the limits were going to be, you know, before we all thought it was going to be around 40 or, you know, no one saw it going all the way down to zero and four. So, you know, but now everyone has to report it, and we have to let everybody know, as we continue the sampling for the next several years, we will report our results.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
We appreciate it.
And yeah, and I'll come back and keep you posted on how it's going.
All right, so now we'll move forward to a downtown parking discussion. Andy will let you kick it off. I know you had a comment earlier that you said would be more.
Yeah, sure. And I know with it being a discussion, I just want to make sure I'm answering any questions that counsel has. Couple high-level things. As I mentioned, we were looking at rolling out some additional downtown park improvements, parking improvements, which will be some additional striping, cleaning up some of our curbs, our signage, just to make it easier for people to see where to park and where not to park. We were planning on doing that in the spring, it's now warm enough, and with the funding, we'll be able to execute on that plan. As we discussed, our goal was to increase our capacity of on-street parking. It will be anywhere between 80 and 100-plus parking spaces, depending on what we completely, what we complete in this first phase of striping.
An additional 80 to 100 parking spaces?
Yeah, with relining and some things, some adjustments that we're looking at doing on the, on the streets, sure. At the same time, as we've been talking about downtown developments just in a broader scale, we've been doing analysis of what those impacts are going to have on just the available parking that we have right now and surface-level parking. Our largest parking lots being Lots 1, 11, and 10, between those existing parking lots, it's roughly about 500 parking spaces between those. So knowing that in transactions that we have sold those, there will be development, what is developed exactly, there's still going to be plans to be developed, and so knowing that that parking is going to be coming offline. Additionally, with Lot 16, looking like it may be moving forward, and then Lot 30 being ready to move forward, that's additional parking spaces. So we're roughly, you know, around 400, 400-plus permits that we'll eventually, in the near future, need to start thinking about a different home for. So what we're doing is we're starting to really ramp up what we want to do when we, if we have full development of these parking lots, what are the alternatives for, for parking? Our garage that exists right now is starting to get, when I say it's starting to get full, if we had no additional development and the Ross was full in capacity, and we needed to also service court, it would be tight. So, you know, you all, as a group, have provided the authority for an additional parking garage. We have seen designs that have been submitted for a 450-space parking garage. We still have some room to go on that with the adjacent development, but we're starting to think about, you know, what this looks like and how we can afford, what our next steps are. Mayor and I, and John, were talking about it this morning, we're looking to pull together a stakeholder group and some downtown stakeholders, some developers, some architects, just really in people who work and play down here and just understand what's that look like, how's this going to impact everybody, get some additional feedback, looking at potentially procuring meet and hunt to help do a small area plan for downtown with having parking as Mayor and I, and John, were talking about this morning, we're looking to pull together a stakeholder group and some downtown stakeholders, some developers, some architects, just really in people who work and play down here and just understand what's that look like, how's this gonna impact everybody, get some additional feedback, looking at potentially procuring Meet and Hunt to help do a small area plan for downtown with having parking as part of the conversation. Not only just parking, but also navigating downtown and then around the island, around Mill Street, Carroll Street, which also plays into some of the next updates. So I'm gonna pause there and then open up for discussion or any further comments on administration.
If we can have a representative from council in those meetings and those, that would be amazing. I know either whomever district that four is, yours, or, you know, myself, or any of us, that would be great for one of us to be included.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's good, so that, that answers, because one of my questions was, again, I know that, you know, parking, we've kind of had that discussion, and we did authorize the garage to continue forward, we wanted plans on that and those things, because the realization is, you know, some of these lots are, are sold for future plans, whatever the plans may be, and we have lots that are, will be offline, i.e. Lot 16, where I park, will be offline in a few, so I'll have to park in, in the garage. And so, again, when we transition those persons who are parking in lots now to the garage, what does it look like? What is that? So, and that kind of guides the conversation as to how soon we should be building, you know, another parking substance. So that's where I kind of wanna get some, some timeline, like, what, what is, what are we currently working on and how soon should be, how soon should we be discussing the, the construction of that garage?
Well, I thought we basically gotta a plan approved so that they could get the, get under that May 1 deadline, but I think there's lots to be determined, and we've got a new player in the market with regard to the, you know, the library being knocked down, the performance art, so there's another element. So potentially the way that, that project's gonna get redeveloped, that part, so there's a lot of moving parts, and so we're gonna kind of do, you know, sort of, it's like you say, stakeholder design, small area plan, and get it right, yeah.
Good, we appreciate that, that's, that's a good update and a good development that we like to see.
Yeah, and again, you can't build a garage overnight if we go with the garage, and it costs a lot of money, and I know we have the funding, so, but you also don't wanna build it and then realize you built it too big, or really too small. So you wanna kind of, like, what is that, that right fit, knowing what a full development? But we just need to see who all are coming to the table and what they're planning on doing. And so I'm thinking, as we move forward, give us a few more of these meetings, I think we're planning to try to have a kickoff meeting here in the next couple of weeks, I don't hold me to that date, but I think that's the plan, and then we can, as this rolls out, come back to council and kind of move things forward. But we will be moving forward with some of the surface-level treatments.
Improvements, yeah.
Improvements and stuff like that immediately.
And that's good, I think, you know, again, that some of the, you know, the contention with, you know, for persons who don't prefer a garage, again, we're adding 80 to 100 spaces, you know, for street parking, so this answers that, for, again, so I think we're, we're doing both there, which is, I think, something that the public will like to hear, so thank you for that. Any other questions, comments from council? Yes, councilwoman?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on, so back when we did the tour downtown and we walked around, and you guys saw how awkward it was for a wheelchair user to get around downtown. I wanted to touch base on when we're doing this marking up, are we going to be making more accessible spaces so that there's more disabled parking outside of the garage on street?
Yeah, I, I think, Michelle, you and I should connect on that, we actually have Mike here, as, before we start painting stuff, let's look at what makes sense.
Yeah.
And then, especially with the signage, so if we can just kind of have a small recap, kind of what we had talked about, some of the limitations, as we're building that out, makes so much sense.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Okay. Do you have anything else on this?
There is also another thing that we're exploring, but I would say, stay tuned, as we are, we, today was our first day of our new economic development manager, he started today, so we're, as we also talk about parking, we have to talk about how it impacts our downtown businesses and our downtown transient groups of people, so we're trying to talk through not only what our improvements are, but also what our parking looks like in general, from the fees being charged, what is free, what is fee-based, where people are parking, to help make it enticing for people to want to continue to come downtown, shop, play, and even work. So more to come on that conversation.
It, it sounds like what people have been, you know, discussing and kind of what we've been bringing to the table, it's, this is what we, this is the conversation, and this is where, so again, when we add these things, we like to hear these, it sounds like progress is happening, so we appreciate that so much. So I know we have a couple of public comments, so we'll, Robert Taylor, we'll invite you up, and then, is there one?
And Holly.
Okay, great, so we'll go with Mr. Taylor first.
If I can, instead of standing here, I've got something to show you, I'll just stand here, if that's okay. This is a photo that was taken about a year, a month ago. It has the main parking lot, 1, 11, and 15, the three lots that were sold to the apartment group that Gillis represents, one of the members, the main guys from Ballin Park. And it's a Tuesday, April the 4th of last year, about 10:30, maybe 11 o'clock in the morning, based on when shadows fall, I'm an expert at that, and it's 267 vehicles. To just give you some idea, all that parking would be eliminated by those apartments and the parking garage and the Grinky Dink Park that's been built. In fact, that's, the Grinky Dink Park has eliminated really the prime parking in downtown Salt Harbor, anybody could see that. So that's what you've got. Now, the parking garage that I think is mainly to service this area here, not on the other side of Division Street, not down where the parking garage is, not down where Lot 16 is, not down where the quote hotel convention center is going to be. And here we have 267 right there. Now, the apartments, if they're built to what they're proposing, 220 units, average of about two bedrooms per unit, that's 440 bedrooms, 440 people. Even if they're only 90%, 85% filled all the time, you're talking probably 350, 400 cars. Add those to the 267, and what do you have? A lot more than 450. Now, the Mike Gunn theory is, well, all the people that live in the apartments, nobody go under them today, so when people come downtown, they'll use their spaces, kind of like hotbed, like we did with the Navy. And I'm telling you, it doesn't work that way. What happens on a holiday, when they're closed, most of them, and they're there, and other people wanna come downtown for some event, what do you have? You have chaos. You have to design your parking in maximum conditions, just like you design roads. So highways are four lanes for a reason, you need four lanes, others are just two lanes. So anyway, that's what I wanna impress on you all, I brought this to show you, this is actually an exhibit from the litigation that's going on, and I'll send you small copies of it by email. Just a quick comment, the consulting firm you mentioned, I don't know if that's the one that did the traffic study for our litigation, but if it is, I'd get another firm, and I'll send you our analysis of their report, if that's the same firm, I'll check, if it's not, I'll send it to you. A lot of those spaces that are gonna be along the street are gonna be, they're gonna narrow street width, in many cases, probably unsafely. Many of them are going to be where we have periodic flooding, like along Market Street. So we've got a lot of problems.
Please, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, I'm 100% on board with what Robert Taylor is saying. I also have concerns, because while you guys are putting lines on the streets everywhere, my building still has no street parking, nor will it have if Lot 15 goes into development, will it have any parking adjacent? I have people that live upstairs, I already see them struggling walking from the further lot over to the apartments, you know, I, obviously, it's gonna be a devaluation of my investment in the property, but it also is an inconvenience, inconvenience to people that are coming in and patronizing the building as well. We have no unloading zone, the one section in the back of our building that actually was a easement was granted to Gillis to build his parking lot, which in lieu, we were supposed to be getting parking in that lot, and we did not. Same as Opportunity Shop, they also gave that easement over to create that parking, and were told that they were gonna get parking, never came to fruition because it wasn't in writing, but they have their parking lot adjacent to their building, and we have no parking once this development occurs. Again, we don't have any adjacent street parking at my building whatsoever.
Okay, great, thank you for your comment, and it sounds like there are a couple of concerns, but from what I hear, we are, we're making a stuff...
Yeah, we're very much in the planning stages, so we're not, nothing's, nothing's firm.
Yes, and so, you know, it's, it sounds like some of these things will be addressed, but again, I do like the, the fact of the, the on-street parking being, being in addition to the conversation. Again, I trust that we'll, we'll do that safely, and, again, those stakeholders who are in on this, they can, they can converse and share their concerns, so thank you all for that.